Hello, everybody. I'm looking for the moniker, monitor and the queue from AGP to get started. Looks like we're ready to go. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Today, we're at a joint meeting between our WRFCAC board, our Water Reclamation Facility Citizen Advisory Committee, which is a mouthful to say, and the city council. It is December 1st, 2015. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Building. And welcome, everyone. I just wanted to establish a quorum for city council. All members are present. And then I turn it over to the Chair of the WRFCAC board to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Di Addati. All members are present except for Mr. Sadowski.
Thanks very much, John. And at this point, well, before we go into public comment, I did want to acknowledge Sarah Moffett, Field Representative from Senator Feinstein's office. I just want to welcome you and thank you for coming. It's an important issue for us, and I know Senator Feinstein has been paying attention to the Central Coast, all matters pertaining to water in particular. So I wanted to thank you for taking a trip from Fresno today, just for the meeting. So, thanks very much. And with that, I would open it up for public comment. For anybody who would like to speak to these items on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none? Barry, I'm looking at someone out there, but it doesn't seem like we have any public comment? No? Okay, all right. No public comment. And so we'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And we, and our WRFCAC board, we have two items on the agenda today. We have a Facilities Master Plan Treatment Alternatives and Recommendations. We have a Water Reclamation Facility Project Update. And it's our opportunity to start that off. And I'll look to our Public Works Director, Rob Leibert, to open the meeting on these subjects and brief us on that, and then we'll get started. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, for the WRFCAC. Pleasure being here with you today, this afternoon, to yet have another opportunity to look at status of the project and delve into some technical details on that project. So today, we have with us the Black and Beach team, with Matt Thomas leading that team, and then representatives from our project management team, Mike Nunley and Associates. And Mike will be presenting on that subject. Just want to point out that we're really not looking for a decision at this point, at anything that we're talking about today. This is for information for the public, the WRFCAC board, and the city council. We welcome any questions that you might have, any points of clarification that can be added into the Facilities Master Plan when we get to that point. Just want to point out that this is not the last place that we'll visit issues related to our Water Reclamation Facility and Facilities Master Plan. We'll have updates with our WRFCAC through the first part of the year, culminating in sometime around mid-March for a draft Facilities Master Plan presentation at a joint, another joint meeting. We'll have at least one Saturday workshop between now and then, where we'll take additional community input. And then we'll be rolling out the new, within the next couple of weeks, a new web presence for our project, where we'll have an easy way to take public input through the website also. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tom, oh, Mr. Nunley, to have some opening remarks before we get into the meat of the presentation on the Facilities Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I'm Mike Nunley, Program Manager for the Water Reclamation Facility with MKM and Associates. And I just wanted to give a brief introduction to the Black and Beach team. Matt Thomas of Black and Beach is the engineering lead for the project with the firm. The Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee members, over the last couple of months, have been meeting twice monthly to review various technical memoranda that Black and Beach have put together and to provide comments. And they provided some comments in anticipation of the presentation today on liquid treatment alternatives. So we're excited to introduce Matt and let the Black and Beach folks respond to some of their comments, and also give you an overview of the liquid treatment alternatives being explored in the facility master plan. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Thomas with Black and Beach. And as Mike said, I'm the engineering lead for the project. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council and WRFCAC, it's a privilege for us to be here. We're really excited about this project, and I can speak on behalf of our team that we've really been very passionate about working on this project for you and really have enjoyed working on it so far. So today, we're going to be, make sure I get this right, we're going to be sharing with you today the Liquid Treatment Technologies Evaluation. So we have a short agenda. Before we dive into the meat of it, I wanted to just give a few minutes of overview about the Facility Master Plan itself. And then the lion's share of the meeting and the discussion today will be with Brad Hemken, who's our technical lead on the liquid treatment technologies. He's going to step you through an overview of the technical evaluations that we did. And then also, as Mike said, we've gotten some comments from the WRFCAC, which are very valuable, and along the way, we'll try to address those as best as we can. So a little bit about the FMP, that'll be the shorthand for the Facility Master Plan, the FMP. So the FMP, the process that we've been going through to date has been to develop a series of technical memos. The one that we're talking to today happens to be TM 7 on liquid treatment. But as you can see up here, we're developing nine separate individual technical memos, TMs. All of those are serving to inform the FMP. And along the way, the process has included presenting a number of these so far to the WRFCAC, specifically 2, 3, 6, and 7. And the WRFCAC members have, and we have to say without a doubt, we definitely appreciate the time and the effort that they've spent really, really reading these, really studying them, and coming back with some excellent comments and excellent feedback for us. We've received comments, again, on those four, and have been incorporating those into the technical memos as we go. Make sure we get that right. Okay. So that's really the overview. Mike, at the end, is going to be giving an update of the whole project and where the FMP stands along the way as well. So we'll get into more details about the overall FMP at the end. But today, like I said, we're going to focus on liquid, the Liquid Treatment Technologies Evaluation. Of course, this is the heart of the Water Reclamation Facility, answering the question of what's the best way to treat the city's wastewater to create a new water resource for the city. This is a valuable opportunity for the city to be able to not just deal with the issue of treating your wastewater, but to create a new water resource, find the highest and best use for that water, and create an amenity for the city as a whole. And what we've focused on at a high level in the treatment technologies evaluation is to align with your goals. These are eight, the eight of the city council goals that have been laid out for the project. The five, the first five of those that you can read up there really are focused on the treatment technologies. Of course, the base goal of having tertiary disinfected wastewater. But with the, the real thought in mind is what's the highest and best use for your, of your water, to have a cost-effective reuse options. That's going to dovetail with the master water reclamation plan that's being worked on now. So what you're going to see Brad Hemken talk about is all of the evaluations to look at a spectrum of potential technologies to be able to meet a variety of potential end-use goals, knowing that in the near future, we'll have more definition about what those end uses are, and you'll have a suite of options to be able to pick from in the FMP to align with what those end uses turn out to be. Along the way, in the treatment technologies, it's also looking at how to handle solids, deal with composting, look for opportunities for energy recovery, and to be mindful of contaminants of emerging concern. So we're making sure that the treatment technology evaluations touch on all of those options. And then, as I mentioned, and Mike has mentioned before, along the way, we want to make sure that the FMP is collecting input from the entire community, the process of getting input from the WRFCAC. Meetings like today, we're going to hear other input and concerns raised, other community workshops that are being held, led by the program team. All of those things inform the technical memos and ultimately the FMP. The diagram that's on your screen is specific to what we're talking about today. The first step in our process was actually technical memo 2, which spoke to determining what's the capacity of the treatment plant, what are the flows that we need to handle, what are the various loads for constituents that are in the wastewater. Those led into the evaluations that we're going to focus on today in two fronts. We're going to focus on the Liquid Treatment Technology Evaluation today. But married to that is going to be the solids treatment, or what you'll hear us refer to as the biosolids treatment evaluations. Those two things, those are TM 6 and 7, and those two things will marry together for an overall treatment process that you'll see in the FMP going forward. So that's the overview that I wanted to give. I'll take a step, stop here and see if there are any quick questions, and then I'd like to hand it off to our task lead, Brad Hemken.
Any questions from council? The board? Just briefly, I know we jumped right into the meeting itself. I think once we get done with the presentation, it'll allow the council and the advisory board a little bit more dialogue, and perhaps, I think there's probably some remarks from council on the work that the WRFCAC has been doing on the city's behalf as well. So at the conclusion, we'll have some more questions. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. And I believe, as we did, we've done this presentation in a different form for the WRFCAC already, and in that presentation, we encouraged everybody to offer out comments and ask questions along the way. So we'll, I think we'll continue in that spirit. We're open to doing that. So I'm going to turn it over to Brad Hemken.
Good afternoon, everyone. Pleasure to be here. And as Matt said, as we go along, if you have any questions that pop in your minds, please ask them, please interrupt, and we'll take them as they come. So this new treatment plan is going to basically be a series of treatment steps, building blocks, if you will, to provide affluent quality that's fit for purpose relative to the end uses that are selected. And what's shown on this graph, the top line, is, as Matt alluded to, the baseline level of treatment that the city has decided on, which is tertiary treatment. And that provides water quality suitable for ocean discharge that actually would exceed water quality required for ocean discharge, restricted and unrestricted irrigation, according to Title 22 regulations. Then, as you progress into higher levels of treatment, what's shown on the bottom line here is advanced treatment, which would be required for groundwater recharge, avocado irrigation, indirect potable reuse. And what we're talking about with advanced treatment is basically salt removal and a higher level of disinfection. So I'm going to walk through each of these building blocks, talk about the technologies that we reviewed, the ranking and the scoring and the recommendations that we see of the technologies for each of these building blocks to take forward into the FMP for detailed analysis, you know, site layout, sizing, detailed cost estimates. So, starting with the first building block here, preliminary treatment.
Pardon me, we do have a question coming up?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. You know, I just wanted to, I do have a question on the chart. If we could go back to the slide just prior, and then one's a procedural question. Mr. Mayor, do you want us just to individually raise our hands if we have a question to the presenter, or do you want us to talk to the chair, or how should we do that?
As, I think as, from the format in the past, that you, at the, you take a pause and if there are any questions as we're going through the slide. I think if there's any pending questions from the board, that I can tell, nobody's been too shy about, pardon me, I have a question for you at that point, so I think we can, we can get through that.
Okay, great. Yes, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine, same for the WRFCAC, too. Okay, just a brief question for clarity. A lot of folks are seeing this for the first time, including me and our members of the public. So if you could just walk through really quickly the chart again. So your, the treatment alternative, so basically, Moro Bay is going to start at the tertiary treatment level, is that right?
Yes.
So the first, the orange, the purple, the green, we don't, we're not worried about that too much? Or is that, is that showing us the progression?
The top line, level, gold, purple, yellow, blue, lighter blue, top line, tertiary plus, and disinfection. That's kind of the baseline level of treatment that has already been decided on.
Okay, okay.
And, again, those are, those are treatment steps, kind of building blocks, if you will. And, and then advanced treatment would be additional purification required to fit for purpose with indirect potable reuse, avocado irrigation, groundwater recharge, where salt removal is required and a higher level of disinfection.
Okay, so just quickly, so then, in other words, the tertiary treatment will get us to, on the, on the furthest to the right, it'll get us to ocean discharge and actually exceed ocean discharge regulations?
Right.
And then tertiary will get us to restricted and unrestricted irrigation?
Right, according, according to Title 22 regulations.
Okay. And then, and then in order to get to the other three, we need to go to the advanced treatment level?
Right.
Okay. And then, again, just for clarity for the public, sometimes, I mean, a lot of folks watch these meetings live or in replay, so just confirming that IPR is indirect potable reuse?
Right, indirect potable reuse.
Okay. And then we didn't talk yet about the disin-
Would you like me to explain what that is exactly?
I would love it. I'm sure, I'm sure other people, too.
Okay, indirect potable reuse is recharging into a potable water aquifer. And that potable, and that aquifer provides an environmental buffer such that with sufficient travel time, that same water can be recovered in potable drinking wells. So it's recharged on one end of a basin, basically. There's travel time, then it, then it can be recovered for potable.
Okay, so such as a drinking well? A well?
So indirect potable reuse with that environmental buffer of groundwater.
Okay, great. That's excellent. All right. And then the last one is, we haven't yet talked about the disinfection quadrant, right?
On the top line?
On the top line.
We will.
You'll get there?
Yeah.
Okay. But you did, but you didn't say anything yet, and I didn't miss it, right?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, it's tertiary filtration and then disinfection, and that gets you to Title 22 water for either restricted or unrestricted reuse.
Oh, okay, so it is on the continuum, then? So disinfection's included?
Yes, absolutely.
In all of those, the five?
Everything on the top, on the top row, right, is-
Gotcha.
Is required for those end uses.
Okay, great. And I appreciate you taking the time to explain it. When you meet with the WRFCAC, they're, they're likely have a level that's a bit more sophisticated than at least me, for sure. They're experts in the field, and then I know that this is kind of the first time the general public is going to be watching this, so I appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely, slow me down. There's a lot of acronyms in here, and, you know, I tend to roll over them as if everybody understands exactly what I'm talking about. I know that's not true, so please, slow me down if I get-
No, pace is great, so thank you.
Okay. All right, so, we're going to walk through the top row of colored building blocks here. First one being preliminary treatment. So preliminary treatment is, at the head end of a wastewater treatment plant, you're trying to take the large materials out, basically. So it's mechanical screening and grit removal. There are various types of screens, various types of grit removal, all of them equally effective. So our approach to this is going to be recommend levels of basic design criteria, in other words, size of screen opening for the mechanical screens, and target grit removal levels. But leave the detailed selection of those pieces of equipment to the ultimate detailed design phase of the project. There's, there's really marginal benefit in trying to nail that down. We feel it'd be better to let the marketplace make that decision at the appropriate time at the detailed design. Now, we will be selecting a technology for screening and grit removal in the, in the facility master plan for cost preparation purposes, but we feel like it's better, it's in the city's best interest to leave those decisions open until the detailed design phase. So, next is primary treatment. Primary treatment is a tank where the wastewater is run through it, and there's a detention time there to allow solids to settle out. We're looking at primary treatment for plants of this scale. Primary treatment is really optional, and there are a number of factors that play into having primary treatment or not in the facility. There's pros and cons. So we're going to let that go to the master plan as well, and evaluate all of the alternatives with and, with and without primary treatment in the facility master plan for the detailed cost analysis, and postpone that decision until the facility master plan. Okay. Secondary biological treatment is really the workhorse of a water treatment, wastewater treatment plant. It's where the bulk of the organic removal is done. The processes downstream of the secondary biological treatment are really additional purification and further levels of removal for fit-for-purpose water. So when I talk about secondary biological treatment, this is really the workhorse of a wastewater treatment plant. And just to back up here, what we're talking about with secondary biological treatment is basically a natural process. It's happened for, you know, eons. Bacteria synthesize the waste. It happens naturally in rivers everywhere. What we're doing in a treatment plant is basically concentrating that treatment in a smaller footprint, speeding it up, but it's really just natural treatment, if you will. There are a number of ways to accomplish biological secondary treatment. These are the technologies we evaluated. What we're talking about basically is bringing the wastewater in contact with microbiology to synthesize that organic material. You can do that in fixed growth systems where the bacteria attach themselves to media, you trickle the wastewater through. That's the method for bringing the water into contact with the bacteria to make that happen. There are suspended growth systems where you, you grow the bacteria in a tank and keep it suspended, run the wastewater through the tank. That's a suspended growth system. There are also hybrid systems where you can do that with a combination of suspended growth on a media that's suspended in a tank and have both attached growth system and simultaneous with suspended growth systems. And all of these technologies are viable, and they all have, you know, a sweet spot, if you will, on a case-by-case basis. There's pros and cons to each of them. Some cost more, some cost less, some have larger footprints, some have smaller footprint. So each of them have pros and cons. We selected after, after that eval, after going through all of those pros and cons for each technology, and you'll see that in the technical memorandum, we selected three to carry forward for further ranking, scoring and ranking. And that's a standard activated sludge system, historically conventional activated sludge system, sequencing batch reactor, and oxidation ditch, which is extended activated sludge. Sure. Yep.
Now, you can't take, say, from the suspended growth system, you can't take like an oxidation ditch and put it in the hybrid system. Each of those are tied together as far as the technologies goes?
Well, you could, you could combine, in fact, the hybrid system that I was mentioning, where you can combine suspended and attached growth in the same tank, if you will. That's really the integrated fixed film activated sludge system, where what you're doing is you're taking some plastic media, floating it in the tank, some of the bacteria attached to that media. You also have suspended growth, you know, and activated sludge component, so you've got both suspended growth and attached growth in the same tank.
Okay.
So, so I think to answer your question, yes, 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 you could.
Okay.
The idea there with that, that integrated fixed film activated sludge is you can do it in a small footprint, because you got, you know, you've got both the attached and suspended growth components, and you can increase the retention time of the biology that way and do it in a small tank. Now, an oxidation ditch process by definition is a large tank. So it's, we're probably not talking about combining those two technologies. So those, these are the three conventional biological secondary treatment alternatives that we carried forward and used a set of evaluation criteria and ranked each of them against that, those criteria. Activated sludge, just, just quickly, some advantages and disadvantages of each of these. You know, activated sludge has been around forever. It's a very well-known technology, easy, you know, to operate, you know, it's been around forever. It's a very well-known technology. It's, it's a, it's a technology that's easily configured for biological nutrient removal, nitrogen and phosphorus. I can explain that if anybody has an interest, but other, without, I'll go on. Disadvantages, at this scale, it's, it's less modular. And Title 22 requires process redundancy. So to provide that process redundancy with an activated sludge plant being less modular than some of the other technologies, it's going to be more expensive to provide that process redundancy. It's got a moderate footprint, larger than some, smaller than the oxidation ditch, if you will. So there's kind of the advantages and disadvantages. Sequencing batch reactor is a batch operation. It's a single tank. You do the treatment and the settling component in the same vessel, going through a cycle where you fill the tank, oops, sorry, I got the wrong button. You fill the tank, let it do its, its reaction in synthesizing the organics, then you turn the air off, let it settle, and then, and then decant. So you do the treatment and the settling and decant all in one tank, as opposed to the activated sludge facility, which you do the treatment in this tank, and then the affluent goes to this tank, a subsequent settling tank for the solid separation. So there's-
Brad, could I interrupt, please?
You bet.
Question about your SBR, in terms of your footprint with your activated sludge. What's the comparison of the footprint between those two?
Since you're, since you're doing everything in one tank, instead of having a aeration tank and a settling tank, it's a smaller footprint.
Given, given the size load that this wastewater facility will take, you're saying it would be one tank, or what would it?
Well, it's one, it's one, one treatment step. It's, it's, there'll be multiple tanks because it's modular, it's more modular, so you will do that in multiple tanks. I just, when I, when I, when I meant, when I said one tank, I meant, you know, instead of having an aeration tank and a settling tank for the solid separation, it's all done in one, in one tank. Now, there will be multiple modules, and it's a more modular process than, than activated sludge, which has the advantage, again, going back to the Title 22 process redundancy, the, it is, is more modular in that- it is more modular in that when you add another tank just to get that process redundancy, you're not spending as much money because, you know, because it's more modular. And, you know, that modularity is also, has an advantage. You know, the flow projections, you know, can change, and, you know, you might need to add capacity sometime in the future, a bit sooner than you thought. With this modular approach of an SBR, it's much easier to add additional capacity down the road if that would be required. So, the modularity is a big advantage for SBR. Disadvantage is that your treatment goes, whoops, it goes through these cycles. Each of those cycles is a, you know, is a control gate. You've got to divert the flow when you're going to react here, and you go to settle, then one of the other modules is going into, you know, react. So, you've got some flow diversion and instrumentation required to work with modules in tandem with one another. So, that's a bit of a disadvantage. And as a batch process, you're taking all of the flow, you're taking all of the flow out of each module, and you've got to have a method to equalize that downstream to go to the filtration and disinfection step. So, SBRs also require some volume for downstream flow equalization. Okay. Oxidation ditches, that's just a variation on activated sludge. By increasing the hydraulic retention time and the solids retention time to, say, 24 hours is the typical hydraulic retention time for an oxidation ditch. And the advantage is that it's a very stable operation and can react and handle swings in influent loading and flow easier than the other technologies. The disadvantage with that is it requires a very large volume, more cost to provide that additional volume. These facilities are going to be, need to be covered with the air underneath them exhausted through odor control, so, you know, we're going to be talking, we're talking about a larger volume of air that needs to be handled for odor control. And they're typically shallower than a conventional activated sludge plant. They typically use surface aerators for aeration, typically less efficient than a traditional activated sludge plant or an SBR. So, those are some of the advantages and disadvantages of each of those technologies.
Peter, right? I have a quick question. Because of the larger footprint, is it also fair to assume that the rim of the oxidation ditch basically has to be level around the entire end of that thing?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, we're on a very topographic area where it's falling off the hill, or, you know, you...
Yeah.
I'm just, I guess I wanted to make clear, there's another disadvantage there, is you've got to do a massive amount of grading in order to create that oxidation ditch. I'll say for the site we have in question today, I'm not sure if it's been tied down or not, but...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, the tanks are all going to have to be, no matter...
Well, but most of the other tanks are smaller by nature, and you're digging half of them in the ground.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure in my mind, it has to be level around that whole oxidation ditch. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question as well. As far as odor control on these three, is this the appropriate question to ask under these three biological treatment components that we're discussing now as an example? Will odor control be discussed in each one of these methods, and which one has the best odor control, or what would be the next cost to create the least odor in this technology?
Well, yes, all, any of these secondary biological treatment processes are going to require odor control, and it's not that any one of them will generate more odors than another. It's just the volume of air that has to be dealt with as you cover each of these treatment tanks with the larger footprint of an oxidation ditch...
More cost.
You know, requiring a larger cover, and you've got more air to exhaust underneath that cover, so you're just dealing with a larger volume of air. It's not that it's more or less odorous than any of the other technologies. It's just the volume of air.
I guess that's the other question, is we weigh in these different technologies, how that cost is going to factor into it as well?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. That certainly is a part of the cost consideration.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I wouldn't, just kind of going a little back in the presentation, but regarding primary treatments, we're leaving that to be edited further with responses to the RFP and then the facilities master plan process, but the headworks can, as we know, be one of the highest contributors of odors, and I'm expecting, and I've heard you already talk about, that'll be a key highlight and feature of the technology that is chosen for the headworks, is the ability to contain it and manage those odors.
Yes, absolutely. The screens and the grit removal will need to be enclosed in a building of some kind with that, with the air inside that building exhausted through odor control facilities, absolutely.
So, you had said earlier, you're going to let the market decide, you're going to do specs on the headworks, but let the market decide the technology. Will your specs include covering under any scenario?
Yeah, oh, yes. The preliminary design that we get into in the facility master plan and the site layouts and the cost estimates, we will pick a screen technology, we'll pick a grit removal technology, and we will, you know, lay it out on the site in a building, and we'll include the cost of that building in our cost estimate, absolutely. So, those advantages and disadvantages for each of those, you know, they kind of roll up. I just summarized the advantages, disadvantages. This is a list of the evaluation criteria that we use to score each technology. A relative comparison of capital cost, including the fact that, you know, some of them are going to be more expensive to odor control. Comparative cost in terms of energy, I mentioned the oxidation ditch. One of the disadvantages is it's a little less sufficient with energy usage, odor mitigation, the complexity of that, technical complexity of the process and burden on the operators, reliability, staff requirements, scalability, goes to the modularity I was talking about, product water quality, flexibility for Title 22 redundancy, again, with regard to the modularity, visual impact and footprint. So, scoring criteria, we applied a weighting factor to each of those criteria, applied a score between those three processes for each of the criteria, and SBR came out as our recommended alternative for conventional secondary biological treatment, again, basically due to the advantages that I was talking about on that SBR advantages, disadvantages slide. Okay, so, now, after the secondary biological treatment, we're into additional levels of purification for reuse opportunities. Filtration is the next step, and we looked at two types of Title 22 filtration technologies, disk filters and media filters. There's a picture of a disk filter on this slide, and what that is, is a series of rotating discs with either cloth, stainless steel, or plastic media on each face, and the water is filtered through that media. It's backwashed continuously, and then media filters are similar to what you might see in a potable water treatment plant, sand or anthracite media. Water is filtered through that, that media is backwashed periodically to remove the solids that accumulate. So, we applied this set of criteria to those filtration technologies. In a similar manner, we weighted each of these criteria, gave it a score for each of those two filtration technologies, and disk filters scored more favorably over media filters, primarily due to less capital cost associated with that technology, the technology itself, plus not requiring the backwash recovery and supply facilities associated with media Disk filters are, you know, more compact, they're very modular, they can, again, be expanded more easily than media filters, same concept as the SBR, and they have a lower head loss, which requires, reduces the operating energy cost a bit. Now, I do want to mention microfiltration, and it's the first bullet here. We'll get into the microfiltration discussion along with advanced treatment, and we did receive a comment, very good comment, about microfiltration and why we did not evaluate microfiltration, which is membrane filtration along with disk and media filters. It's just, it's not that it's not a great filter technology, and I'll explain this in a minute, it's just a bit of an apples and oranges comparison to Title 22 filtration because it's such a much better level of filtration. So, that's why we didn't include it in the disk and media filter comparison. But we'll talk about, I want to talk about that in terms of advanced treatment in a couple of slides coming up. But before we go there, let's talk about disinfection a little bit, which is the final step.
Can I ask a question first, please?
Sure.
Can we, we're not seeing scores here, so can we assume that these were clear-cut winners, or were any of these fairly close in comparison?
They're in tech memo.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, they're in the tech memo. We just didn't put them on the slides here. But on the biological secondary treatment, I think it was a pretty clear-cut winner. On the filtration, not as much, and on the disinfection, not as much, actually, but, you know, there was a definite winner in each case.
I've got a question, too.
Sure, Bill.
I was looking in the criteria for evaluation, and I don't see energy recovery. Is energy recovery a substantial weighing factor in evaluation of any of these processes?
Not yet. Energy recovery, I assume you're talking about the solids end of it and anaerobic digestion of the solids and the gas that's generated from that and the value in that gas. Well, that's a solids, that's a solids discussion, and that's kind of where the primary clarifier discussion goes as well, because if you, you have to have anaerobic digesters to make that gas, and you have to have primary clarifiers with anaerobic digesters. So, the question of primary clarifiers or not, it gets into that gas. If you don't have primary clarifiers, you forego the opportunity to anaerobically digest and create that gas. If you want to anaerobically digest and create that gas, you need to have primary clarifiers. So, that question, we're going to deal with in the detailed cost analysis that we perform in the facilities master plan, and so that's why I say we're postponing that decision until we get to the facility master plan.
Christine, did you have a question?
I just wanted, maybe, I'm not sure who's best to respond, but the technical memo, so the question that Mr. Di Addati asked brought up something that wasn't a technical memo. Now, council hasn't necessarily seen all those technical memos yet, but, correct? Right, okay. Are they available? And I'm just trying to search now, and I realize, are they available on the WRCAC agendas? Or is that something that they get at the meetings, and, you know, sort of how can we access that information, and how can we make that accessible to all?
I'll tackle that one. We do have, the tech memos that have been released to WRCAC for their review are posted on the water reclamation facility page on the city's website, and they're titled, you know, Tech Memorandum 2367 as Provided to the Citizens Advisory Committee. So, those have been provided. Others, overviews have been provided on some of the others that are, that have also been prepared. Not all of those had been provided to WRCAC, because some of them, the nature of it was, you know, the first one was a, you know, there were a couple of those that were presented, but the tech memos weren't critical to anything related to the facility master, to the big decisions. There are items that were more for Black and Beach to report progress to us on different evaluations, if that makes sense.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so if folks are watching and want more information, they can go to the homepage for the council, or the city, I'm sorry, the City of Morbays homepage, and click on Water Reclamation Facility Project Updates, and all the technical memos thus far seen will be on there for review.
That's correct. And they can also look at the staff reports for the different WRCAC meetings since, I believe, October, and they can also follow, if they review those staff reports, that'll give them a good idea of the context of each of the memos, and so that'll help them understand what was presented and why.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, could I follow up on Bill's question and just maybe get some clarification on that? He was speaking to, I think, anaerobic digestion and methane gas recapture, and you said that was not going to be dealt with at this time with regard to the process that comes later?
Right.
Could you kind of explain how that fits and where that would occur so that maybe everybody's on the same page?
We have to, we have to understand the costs to build primary clarifiers or not, build anaerobic digesters or not, to be able to generate that gas, and the quantity of gas that would be produced so that we can understand, you know, and put a value on that gas. So, it's really, it's purely a financial comparison, and at this stage, we're identifying the technologies, excuse me, technologies to carry forward to that financial comparison stage. So, that's why I say we're postponing it to the facility master plan stage where we do develop those cost estimates.
Got it. And could you point out where that might occur for the audience in the process you just went through? So that...
Where that work is going to be done?
Not where your work in terms of cost determination, but where the anaerobic digestion and methane gas production occurs in the process.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't think everybody understands that.
Okay, sure. Is everybody okay? Can everybody still see this slide, all the blocks? Okay, or should I go back? No, okay. Okay, so these are the treatment steps again, and primary treatment is right here where the primary clarifiers would be. These will generate primary sludge. Solids will come off of that. As they settle in those primary clarifiers, solids are going to be generated here. Solids will also be generated here, okay? Waste-activated sludge at this point, primary sludge at this point. It's very difficult to anaerobically digest waste-activated sludge alone. You really need primary sludge to make anaerobic digestion successful. So, that's why this is that decision. So, that's, that's why this is that decision point, as to whether or not anaerobic digestion is cost-effective, with consideration of the potential energy recovery from the methane gas. But you add the cost of primary clarification to that. So, it's, it's, that's why I say we're going to take our recommended treatment selection forward and look at it both with and without primary clarification. And we're looking at it with a number of sludge alternatives as well, anaerobic digestion or, or not. But, but that's where the solids, those are the two steps where the solids are generated.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Excuse me. So, basically what you're saying is if, if we come to the conclusion that we don't want to go with the primary treatment, that means that we won't have energy recovery?
Energy recovery from methane gas, that's correct.
That's right. That's what you're saying. That's what we give up.
That's right.
Okay.
Right. There, that's not the only consideration with regard to primary treatment. This primary treatment obviously takes some solids out, takes some organics out, takes some load off of the downstream biological secondary treatment. So, this next step can be a bit optimized, or smaller if you will, simply put, with primary treatment. The secondary treatment step also needs to include biological nutrient removal, specifically biological nitrogen removal. And that is accomplished by using the carbon to drive denitrification, which is basically an anoxic zone where the nitrogen in the form of NO3, the O is stripped off of the NO3 and used for aeration, basically, if you will. And, but you have to have a sufficient amount of carbon to drive that reaction. Sometimes, if you include primary clarification, which reduces that carbon going to the next step, you find yourself carbon-limited and without enough carbon to drive that biological nitrogen removal. So that's another potential disadvantage of including primary clarification. So, it, it really is, there's a number of things that come into that decision, and it, and it just really all has to be looked at in the, in the financial step, which is the facility master plan.
If I could throw something out there, Brad, real quick. And I kind of feel for the city council, because they haven't been to all the meetings WRCAC has. There's two independent streams here. That's the liquid waste stream. You also have the solids that are coming out of each, and they go through the digestion, go through the various ways to press it or dry it out. And so, you're going to have digestion regardless of what they show here on the liquid waste stream, am I correct in that? Either aerobic or anaerobic?
The solids treatment was the subject of TM6.
Right. And that's what they haven't seen, and that's why I think there's a bit of confusion today coming from their end, as you're asking this question.
And in TM6, we identified a number of, I think it was four alternatives to deal with the solids.
Right. But it wasn't showing here today because you're speaking to TM7, which is just really the liquid waste stream going through.
One of those, one of those solids alternatives was untreated solids, which Liberty Composting will accept.
Right.
And so, one of the, one of the solids alternatives is untreated solids.
And so it didn't require digestion?
Without digestion.
Okay, thank you.
If I could jump in just one last item on, on there. There's other energy generation opportunities, as I understand, with solids and wastewater treatment. And it sounds like Cal Poly and City of San Luis Obispo are doing a pretty interesting pilot project at the City of San Luis Obispo wastewater treatment site right now, working with algae. And we know that there's a lot of emerging technologies and systems out there, and we want to be careful about getting too distracted, because we do need to deliver a project fairly quickly. But it is important to be aware of emerging opportunities and factor those in. So, you know, algae appears to be one that could be quite beneficial to us. And how much time have, and consideration was, is that being given?
We didn't look at that at all.
Is, is that something that, you know, in your opinion, is, are we ahead of our time on that? And could be a factor in the future?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to compare that to a project I worked on probably 20, 20-plus years ago, which was an aquaculture project using water hyacinths for wastewater treatment down at the City of San Diego. Total resource recovery demonstration project. The, the problem with that is, is really footprint. If, if, it takes a, it takes, it takes a large footprint to, to do that. Yeah, now, the algae has some value to it when, when you're, when you're all said and done, but it's just a large, very large footprint technology.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think it's, you know, we're, affordability is inherent in all, in our goals list. Affordability is kind of overarching every, every decision. And so, being a small community, we have to be really strategic about where we do invest our resources and time and, and the funds that we have available. So, I understand why we can't, you know, have it all, or...
Yeah. And this project needs to be a good neighbor. It needs, needs to have odor control. It needs to be, oh, somewhat tight, compact, so it can be visually attractive. None of those, none of those fit real well with, you know, with a, with an aquaculture treatment concept.
Yeah. Thanks for those comments. And it is important for people watching to know that we are looking very closely at energy generation on the site, whether it's from solar or so forth, to help displace the costs.
Absolutely.
And as you may notice in the criteria that you have, if you want to start scrolling forward, that first longer list of criteria, many of those, the majority of those do relate to ongoing operations and maintenance, which will be a burden that we're going to have to take care of, and probably will have a bigger total expense than the capital initial cost. So, we're building that into the project, is, is I think the thing I'm trying to say.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and that's, you know, the lifecycle cost of this facility needs to be in the forefront all the way through, you know, construction and startup.
I just have one interjection. I see some interest from the audience in having questions. At the conclusion of the, the presentation, I'll open it up for public comment, so you have an opportunity to ask questions in regard to the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. We were, we were here, right? Disinfection? We looked at UV disinfection and chlorine disinfection, and applied, again, a set of criteria against those two alternatives, weighting and ranking, scoring. UV disinfection scored better than chlorine disinfection, primarily due to a couple of factors. UV disinfection is a smaller footprint, it's more modular, again, more easily expandable and more easily adapted for Title 22 process redundancy. Chlorine disinfection, you run the risk of forming trihalamethanes, which are carcinogens. So you need to be very careful with chlorine disinfection in terms of the contact time, and then dechlorinate at the end, so that you cut the contact time off before you form those trihalamethanes, which is not a worry with UV disinfection. And UV disinfection doesn't require handling of chlorine gas or sodium hypochlorite. So, those are the major advantages for, which, which brought UV disinfection to the top. So now I want to talk a little bit about advanced treatment, which is the, which was the bottom row here for indirect potable reuse, avocado recharge, groundwater recharge, avocado irrigation, groundwater recharge, those end uses that require salt removal and a higher level of disinfection. So...
Pardon? One, one comment. Would it be fair to say that our current plant does, not with the components that you've mentioned, but it does what you've just described? And now you're about to describe a level above that in terms of purification?
Your existing plant?
Correct.
Well, your existing plant is, is not on par with even the top level.
Okay. So it's below that?
Right. Right. Again, as I mentioned, you know, that top level, city minimum standards exceeds what's required currently for ocean discharge. Okay, so advanced treatment. Title 22 regulations also dictate and regulate indirect potable reuse. They require MFRO and advanced, and an advanced oxidation process for indirect potable reuse. Avocado irrigation, the avocados are sensitive to salts, so would require some level of salt removal for avocado irrigation, which, which, which requires reverse osmosis to remove those salts. And once you get into reverse osmosis, you're pretty much locked into microfiltration, which is membrane filtration upstream of the reverse osmosis, as pretreatment to the reverse osmosis to remove, oh, silt, you know, very fine particles that would, would, would inhibit the, and plug up the reverse osmosis vessel. So, when we're talking about reverse osmosis, we're talking about two steps of membrane filtration, micro, micro or ultrafiltration and reverse osmosis, which is, you know, lower pressure filtration with a membrane, and then high-pressure filtration through reverse osmosis, followed by, for indirect potable reuse, advanced oxidation.
So you'd have to have an RO to put it back into the groundwater for reuse downstream? For the groundwater recharge? It has to go through an RO?
Right. Now, now, if groundwater recharge were conducted in the Marro Basin right now, there is no basin plan with a salt limit currently, but it, it is on the state's list to, to have a basin plan. And we're pretty confident that the, once the state establishes a basin plan, it's going to have a salt limit similar to Charro Basin, which is 1,000 TDS. So, even if it wasn't indirect potable reuse into a drinking water quality aquifer, the Marro Basin, you know, a future basin plan would likely require some level of reverse osmosis salt removal. So, this is a photograph of membrane filters. Again, they are lower-pressure membranes. They're either configured as hollow fibers in a submerged, submerged in a, in an open tank, or contained within a pressure vessel, operates around 25 PSI. Membrane filtration is also, could be used for Title 22 filtration up in that top, you know, level of building blocks, if you will. We did receive a comment about that, and there would be some advantages to that, primarily in the downstream UV disinfection. That higher level of filtration reduces the load on the, on the UV disinfection and makes that less energy-intensive. So, and I, and I believe we should revisit our TM7 and discuss that in a little bit more detail. But our thought is, even without reverse osmosis, we'll take a look at membrane filtration in comparison to disk filters and media filters on a, on a cost analysis to try, to take into account that more efficient UV disinfection. So, anyway...
Brad, when, when will that analysis come?
We'll do that in the FMP when we get into the detailed cost estimates.
Okay.
So, this is a picture of reverse osmosis. Again, it's, it's the next level of membrane filtration, if you will, a higher pressure. You know, it's no different than the RO system you might have in your kitchen, it's just on a much more, much larger scale, if you will. The brine that would be generated would, would be discharged through the city's existing ocean outfall. Because there is a, you know, the salt brine that's generated with reverse osmosis has to be dealt with. Advanced oxidation, the, the technology of choice that's really been used almost everywhere is, is UV peroxide. You introduce hydrogen peroxide in, ahead of a very high-intensity UV, breaks out the hydroxyl radicals from the hydrogen peroxide, which are extremely potent disinfectants. So, the advanced oxidation process is creating hydroxyl radicals by introducing hydrogen peroxide ahead of high-intensity UV. This is a picture of that technology from the Orange County Water District Groundwater Recharge Facility. Okay, so, after all of that, we, we have a recommended treatment, recommended conventional treatment plant, if you will, to take forward to the facility master plan for preliminary design and cost estimating. And it include, whoops, sorry. It includes the preliminary treatment, will, again, we'll look at it both with and without primary clarifiers. SBR for secondary biological treatment, disk filters and UV for the Title 22 end uses, and membrane filtration, RO, advanced oxidation for indirect potable reuse, for example. So, that's our recommended conventional treatment train to take forward to the facility master plan, we're calling that alternative number one. We also are recommending a second alternative, go forward to the facility master plan for detailed cost analysis in comparison to this treatment configuration. And that's a membrane, a membrane bioreactor technology. And very simply, what membrane bioreactor technology is, is membranes submerged in an activated sludge basin, and the membranes provide simultaneous solid separation that you do with a clarifier or in the, in the settle cycle of an SBR. And it also is membrane filtration. So you're providing simultaneous solid separation for the biological process along with the higher level of membrane filtration with, with, with membranes. And so, this water, product water, often MBR, is already suitable with the membrane filtration. It's already suitable to go straight on to an RO facility as opposed to our alternative one, which requires a membrane filtration step ahead of RO. So, there, you know, that's right off the top, one advantage for membrane bioreactors. The other advantages are, you operate that technology at a very high sludge concentration, if you will. And so the biological reactor can be reduced in size. So it's a small footprint technology. That has the advantages of less, you know, less tankage to build, less odor to deal with for odor control purposes. I already mentioned that it already produces a... I already mentioned that it already produces a product water suitable to go straight on to RO. So those are the advantages of an MBR, which we think are worth taking a look at in the detailed cost comparison step of the facility master plan. And so we're recommending that be an alternative, a second alternative to take forward to the facility master plan. Any questions on MBR?
[inaudible]
Yes.
I think, now, for questions overall, I think, from both bodies, and maybe some open up for public comment here in a minute. And it's also an opportunity for the council and the Wolf Pack Advisory Board to exchange conversations on progress so far. At this point, we can open up for questions from council, and then turn it back over to our Citizens Advisory Committee. And perhaps it might be a good time to just, you know, recognize our Citizens Advisory Committee's work so far, and open up for council remarks on that. And I'll just lead on, lead in with that, you know, watching the meetings and whatnot. And, you know, it's a very talented board that this committee that we have that has been overseeing each step of the way. So certainly thankful for their work on that, and grateful to have them, because we are quite adept here.
Is your mic on?
Mic is on. Is that better or not? Then I'll just turn it over. How about this one? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, those comments were heard from the local audience, but that's okay. At that, at this point, I'll look to my right, and maybe Noah, you can start off with comments and then work it back through council, and then we'll turn it over to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Go ahead, Noah.
Yes, thank you. I think you said it well, just the breadth of experience and different approaches that each of you takes to the project has really benefited our decision-making so far, and we're definitely depending on you to help us work through these different issues. I also appreciate that you aren't afraid to address sacred cows or weaknesses that you've identified so far and bring those to our project management team's attention and also to the council's attention. So as we go forward, if you see areas that you think we need to consider adding or adjusting, I'm confident that you'll continue to raise those and have a discussion amongst yourselves and communicate to us if you think you need support to make adjustments. So far, I've seen our project management team work very closely and well with you and take your input very seriously. So I'm really happy with the work you've been doing so far and talking with people out in the community. I think it's a strong assurance that we're going to end up with the best project possible.
I will agree 100% with what Noah said. I also, just for the public's sake, if you haven't had the opportunity to review or view one of the meetings, it's amazing the collective brain trust that we have in this community that we have access to at no cost. And the amount of time that these people have put in on this project is just amazing to me. And so not only am I proud to be part of this community with people like you, I'm very thankful that you have committed and stayed this through. And it gives me a great level of comfort, as Noah said, that we're going to have a project that is the best, hopefully most cost affordable product that we possibly can. And so thank you very much for all that you do. And John, for your leadership, thank you for that. We appreciate it.
Matt? Ditto to what's been said. Thank you very much. In the last few months, I haven't been able to watch your meetings, but I have listened to them. And I realize, but I really want to thank you for everything and what everybody brings to the table with these talks and everything. So it's a very important part, and folks in the audience, I know everybody watching at home, this is, yes, it's an onerous process, but having folks like yourself willing to go through it and put the time in, I mean, that's pretty serious. So thank you very much.
Okay, great. Not too much more to add that hasn't been added, but I did think of two unique factors about your committee. One is you have no end date to your terms. So in other words, you're, as I understand it, when you were seated, we said, well, you'll finish when the project is done. So I think if anybody wants to get this five-year timeline going, it's probably you guys as much as the council and the community. So thanks for taking on something that really had no definitive end date, taking that risk and when you applied and continue to serve. And then the other thing I realized is you really are the only advisory board with a nickname. So, you know, we call you the Wolf Pack. I think you call yourselves that. I don't know if that's all right with you. We really should ask you about that tonight. We just kind of adopted it. But I think it sounds kind of fun, but on the other hand, when I think about your process and the way you go things, the way you go through things, words, three words that came to mind were methodical, logical, and extensive. And methodical gets a really bad rap, I think, sometimes, but when you're thinking about an infrastructure project and all the various details that need to go into it, there's nothing more than this community can benefit for than your methodical process of each item. And I will tell you, just looking at the technical memo that you've been receiving, I think that what I would express to all of us on council and then to the community too, is to go back and do visit those technical memos that you've been receiving from Black and Beach, because they're really incredibly extensive, which was another one of my three words, but also the graphics are much more, I guess, they have a lot more detail, which I don't think necessarily you needed to give us tonight, but all the memos have graphics that are really understandable and clear for people to understand. So there is a lot of nuance in the text that I think the graphics balance out. So I know you're reading a lot of those things and you're also having your regular lives. So thanks for taking that extra volunteer time. It's appreciated.
Well, John, as the chair, if you want to start in, you know, and I think there's also the opportunity for questions to ask council if there's anything we can do for the board. So take it away, John.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with this group. We are diverse, and it's amazing what we can accomplish in two hours on any given meeting. It's been incredible to work with everybody. And like you said, Noah, the sacred cows are being tipped over, and we're definitely digging into those details. And it's been a pleasure working with everyone. I think you've seen tonight that even with the questions we've asked already, we're, you know, we're willing to get in and work hard. So we like the Wolf Pack. We might, after one of these meetings, all go out and get a tattoo Wolf Pack on our shoulder or something, because we are a pretty tight bunch. But with that, I'd like to actually get down to work and ask questions and let the public ask some questions. I don't know if anyone in the Wolf Pack wants to say anything.
Great.
Wanted to say one thing to Brad. I had several questions that I put forward to Mike early on, and Brad handled them very well tonight. And quite frankly, for me, this technical memorandum reads very well. I liked where they're going with their recommendations on the different types of treatment. For me personally, and it's me personally, and I realize that, they're looking at ones that are small footprint type plants. They're ones that deal with topography well. They're ones that don't create the odor issues you sometimes get with the larger scale plants. These are important things, as I see going forward in making a project that will be acceptable at the, in the end analysis, so to speak. And this is thrown back to council a little bit. They brought up, one of the goals of council was for the onsite composting. And personally, that concerns me. The problems with onsite composting is, first of all, there's several outfits that do it very well, thank you, and they'll do it cheaper than we ever could. That's Liberty Composting, and I think Engle and Gray was the other one they brought up in the bio-solid section. I would strongly suggest council to go in that direction, because composting takes up a lot of room. There's a lot of odor associated with it. And we live in a town where the land prices are so high that it doesn't make sense to try and get into the composting business. If you look at it from an environmental standpoint, at the end of the day, it'll still get used as compost. It just won't be us actually producing it. But as far as the report went, especially on tech memo seven, I thought was done very well. Thank you, Brad. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the alternative one and then the combined secondary tertiary treatment alternative below that, and then alternative two, all of those different options have the same end product, especially Title 22, and the ability to recharge potable reuse There is no limitation in any of those alternatives that we're going to juice from? No, no. Either can be the backbone of indirect potable reuse. I just wanted to make sure that's true.
Yeah, I want to echo what Steve said, that the format of this, with your recommendation, was done so well, it makes it real easy to decide on these things. So thank you, Brad, and your team for putting this together. One of the comments I did want to make, I don't know if you can answer or not, but on page five of the technical memo number seven, it speaks to the NPDES permit. And there's a statement here, it says, "The City of Maro Bay applied for renewal of the NPDES permit in August of 2013 and has been issued a 301 waiver." Now, I think we were waiting on a renewal of that, so indeed has that occurred? And if so, has the five years started officially now? It's page five of the technical memorandum number seven.
We're still working under an administrative extension by the board staff. So we submitted our application for a new permit, but have not received comments back from the board and their staff as of yet.
So we haven't really been issued the waiver yet, just an administrative?
The waiver was issued back in 13? No, eight, 2009. The new permit will not include a waiver. It will probably be a full secondary permit with interim effluent limitations and perhaps a time schedule order to build the new plant.
When do we anticipate finally hearing in the clock beginning on that?
I would hazard a guess when they will, every time I put a date out there, I'm wrong. They have a fairly high workload right now on other permits, and they see us moving forward with our project. And I don't think there's a whole lot of, as long as we're making progress, motivation to put this on the front burner. As of yesterday, they had a transition at the board. Mr. Ken Harris was appointed by the governor to be head of Dogger, the oil geothermal section of the state. So they'll be looking for a new executive officer, probably have an interim officer in soon. So we'll be meeting with them over the next few weeks to discuss permitting timing, but don't have an answer for you yet.
Is it safe to say that we've already started our five-year clock without that?
Yes, we've started our five-year clock. Internally, we've started our clock. If we read the letter of the resolution that council adopted, the timer doesn't start ticking until the permit is issued, but we're moving on forward without that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I got a question about the five-year. I don't understand when's that going to start? Is that, we have to wait for all the permits first before we start construction? Is that going to take? I mean, are we expecting to get permits for the construction of the plant here? I mean, it's going to have to be soon. How long are we going to? We've got to go through coastal and all that.
Correct, correct. And so we have a timeline, which Mike will be updating in a few minutes here. The five-year goal was an internally generated goal by our community. So we want to get it done as quickly as possible to avoid inflationary costs and continue to move on. We tied that goal to issuance of a NPDES permit for the existing plant. Well, that hasn't come forth as quickly as we thought it would. Technically, the clock hasn't started, but we've been running that clock all along, continuing to move forward. So, you know, facilities master plan, environmental review, permitting, and then, you know, sometime in there, we'll make the decision on whether it's design build, design bid build, and then out to bid and construction be completed sometime by 2021.
So just wanted to mention, since you're aware that the XO is, the spot is going to be filled sometime in the near future, it sounds like you're on the ball that you're actually talking with the folks at the regional board on a periodic basis.
Yes.
So they're well aware of everything that we're doing?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've been doing that even though we didn't know the XO was looking for higher aspirations.
Any other comments from the committee? I have a question for the presenter on the alternatives. On alternative two, just for clarification, because all those end uses might not end up on avocados. So we could have a scenario where 20% of the water's going to avocados, 20% to groundwater recharge, 20% to parks, and then some ocean outfall could be a suite of end uses. If we move an alternative to MBR upstream, are we cleaning water potentially too much for its potential end use, where in alternative one, the water gets cleaned and then we could have a side stream RO process where just the amount going to avocados gets cleaned and we're not spending too much upstream for water that will never have that purpose? Is that a concern between these two alternatives, or am I off base here?
No, no, you're on target. Yes, for purely Title 22 reuse, MBR in terms of water quality would be a bit of an overkill. But it, that technology has become cost effective with the conventional treatment through the filtration disinfection step. So what we're talking about here is an alternative one with either disk filters or media filters for filtration to create one NTU, Title 22 reuse water, comparing that to MBR, which gives you .1 NTU water quality. Those are becoming cost competitive.
Okay. And is there an industry standard of maybe, let's say if it's only, if we know only 10% of the water's going to go to avocados, and then that alternative would be off the table, but around 50% or higher is where we want to consider it? Is there, has the industry sorted that out yet? So if we know, if we kind of know what our end use is going to be, we'd say, yeah, this is a technology we still want to consider, but if we know at the end of the day, we're only going to need the RO and treat the water at a higher standard for 25% of the water?
It's kind of, it's a combination of cost effectiveness and cost competitiveness between these technologies and maintaining the flexibility to very easily go to higher end uses in the future. And so if we just, if we just cut it off and look at, go back to the MBR comparison to conventional treatment, and if we, and if we talk about the disk filter or media filter here to provide Title 22 reuse water and not, you know, replace the microfiltration on this slide with disk filtration or media filtration, that is becoming, or I should say this, MBR is becoming very cost competitive with conventional treatment and Title 22 filtration. filtration. And when we do our cost comparison, if we find out that these two are equal, this one, since it's already suitable for RO, provides the added level of flexibility just to add the RO and go into IPR in the future, as opposed to having disc filters here, spending the money for that, and then go to IPR where you've got to add microfiltration, membrane filtration ahead of RO anyway, you've got a little bit of sunk cost in the disc filter, media filters at that point. So, if it's just Title 22 only, and I don't want to go any further than that, then, you know, that cost comparison, let that, let that play out and see which one wins. But at the same time, you want to keep your, you know, you want to, you want to keep your options open with that higher level of flexibility. That has to be a consideration for, for the potential to go to the higher end uses in the future.
Christine, did you have a question?
You know, I do, but I thought I saw two hands on the WFCAC and then when they're finished. What I might do actually, and I don't know about the other councils, once we have questions finished from the advisory board, maybe we could open public comment because that might inform my questions after that.
Okay, great. Was that?
I think Barbara had her hand on the mic.
Thank you, John.
I just had one quick question. In the technical evaluation system, specifically the Ross score and the criteria, I think it's important to mention, or can you confirm that all of those rankings were done in conjunction with city staff as opposed to one person from a supplier, you know, making a decision? I'm talking about the criteria where you had to down select.
Yes, that was the case. We did that in conjunction with, with city staff. We had a workshop, actually went through those criteria, the weighting and the scoring, made some adjustments, and what you see is the end result of that workshop.
Okay, thank you. That's all, John.
Anyone else from our committee? No, over to you, counsel.
Good. If we're, if no questions, we can open for public comment at this time. I think we had a couple of questions and Brad, if you can just stand by, if we have any answers, I think we'll use the podium there for public comment. Anybody that'd like to come forward, please, please do. For the record, if you wouldn't mind stating your name, that would be helpful.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and others. My name is Roy Sinnerwald. The skin I have in the game, I have a nine-unit building on North Main, apartment building. I know that this tertiary treatment technology has been around for at least 50 years. I worked for several years in the early 60s on a treatment plant in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Tertiary treatment was available then. The engineer on the job said, "I will drink, take a glass of water the day this plant opens and drink it," and he did. Successful plants are in Morro Bay, they've been updated, excuse me, sorry, San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara. They have residential and commercial right up against them. As far as I know, there's no complaints, except those who need to complain about anything. I'm wondering if there isn't a boilerplate template minimum where it could just be put down, we'll build it this way, instead of infinitely dissecting options for five years. I wonder to what extent we could take a template from successfully operating plants like Morro, excuse me, San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara and say, "Hey, this works." I've heard talks from the manager of the San Luis plant, and they're happy it works. They put all kind of money into it, yeah, but they can show cost savings because they So, what I'm saying is, in perspective, I visited a TVA dam on Tennessee River this summer. It backs up 27 miles of water, 460 feet high, generates electricity. FDR did that from day one to generating in three years. I don't sense urgency here. I don't sense drive. I sense infinite dissection. I don't want to say obstructionist, but I don't see anybody saying, "Man, let's get this thing done." Well, that's just the way I see it. Thanks for listening to my editorial.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Come on up.
My name is Mark Schaus. I just live in town. And I had a question. I'm new to this process, but don't we already have RO in the DSal plant? I mean, why don't you just run it over there? Or is that a whole nother problem? And the other thing I had to say is, we should give Cayucus another chance because it sounds like they're going to be sorry if they don't get in on this deal.
Thanks. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Rob, you want to address any of those answers? I think for the first one, as we lead in, I'll just respond to the sense of urgency point for Mr. Sarwold. I hope I got that pronounced right.
C-I-N-O-W-L-A-Y-O-T.
Okay. Early on, early on in this project, as it was estimated that it would take between seven and 10 years, and one of the questions was posed, if the goal is seven to 10 years, we'll meet the goal. So, realistically, what is the, what is the realistic opportunity of completing it in five years? And so, that was a discussion amongst council, and we made that goal to five years. It's a matter of, I think one of the sayings I have, "The time will expand to the time allotted. The job will expand to the time allotted." So, based on that theory, I think the sense of urgency wasn't to accept a seven to 10-year timeline, but let's press forward with a more aggressive timeline of five years and with input from, you know, staff and everything and dialogue with the rest of council, that goal was set for five years. And I think maybe Mr. Lavitt can respond to some of the process questions in your response as well.
Sure. So, five years is for an operating plant, not to continually study it for the next five years and then go to construction. So, the construction window is approximately two years of that five-year period. We have to get through environmental review and design. We're right now at the facilities master planning stage that will set the stage for environmental review and allow us to move forward to either design bid build or design build with the project. So, it is the full package in, for the five years. So, we are close to a year into that five-year period that we haven't started counting yet, but we are a year into that five-year period. So, we're looking forward for construction to be completed sometime before 2021. Question regarding using the existing DSal plant. That came up at a Public Works Advisory Board meeting. I think one of the board members said we should just plug one into the other and generate all kinds of water. Technically feasible, you could connect a wastewater plant right into our DSal plant, but it's illegal. We're not quite there yet with the regulations. So, there needs to be some sort of environmental buffer in between your drinking water supply and your wastewater treatment. So, I think that answers that, that question regarding direct potable reuse. The state is looking to develop those regulations that would allow something close to that happening, but there are ways off before those direct potable regulations are passed. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other questions from council? Christine?
Yeah, thank you very much. So, I think I have just, well, I was going to make a joke about the water in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania 30 years ago, but that's because I was born in western Pennsylvania. So, I was going to say, yeah, I probably would drink that water from that wastewater plant before I would have drank, drank from, you know, the Monongahela or the Allegheny. But Pittsburgh has really rebounded, and I think it's a fantastic city, just spent some time there, visiting family. But I think it's great to hear that there are other projects that are successful and that, you know, we certainly don't have to reinvent the wheel here. There are, there are projects that are up and running and we can replicate some of those to fit our needs, our unique needs in Morro Bay. But I think it was great to hear that comment from the public. Mike, two questions about lifespan. So, that we're, we're looking at what a lifespan is for our current plant, and I'm just wondering if we had some sense of the, a new plant, how long we can expect that infrastructure to last and if there's any variation in any of the alternatives, just kind of, just a quick answer about that. And then, we had always, I'll answer, I'll ask all my questions. I know you're really good remembering them, so that's one about, yeah. It's all right, I wrote them down, so if you forget. Well, I'll tell you what, why don't you answer that one because the other ones are a little bit different.
Okay, sounds good. So, the thing I'll say is, at a treatment plant site, is when you identify a treatment plant location, there are treatment plants that have been in service for 60, 70-plus years in some cases. And so, that's what you keep in mind with siting the plant, finding the land area for it, et cetera. Different aspects of the process, pipelines can be in the ground and run fine for 30 years to 50 years, depending on what they are. Some different parts of the equipment, some equipment you have to replace in five or 10 years, depending on what it is. So, that's where the life cycle cost evaluation, that part of Black and Beach's work comes in, is they look at things like replacement intervals on different types of equipment and repair intervals and all that sort of stuff to develop that life cycle cost. And they're going to be looking at the, you know, the 30 to 50-year range on, on some of that. So, that's part of what we'll work through with them in the draft facility master plan.
Okay, great. And then, a lot of the analysis that we've heard about and the technical memos that have been brought forward and will continue to be brought forward, we have discussed in the past, especially among, from the public comment we've received about perhaps the flows. So, the flows that we're using now, is it our current analysis with Cayucus? Is that what we're using to project the future or have we adjusted it in some way? Or, you know, is there a third way of analysis?
So, what we're, what we've currently done is, we are, we are analyzing the existing flow conditions and loading. We're analyzing future flow conditions and loading. And we're, we're also looking at as a, kind of a, almost look at this as an appendix to the master plan, is what happens if Cayucus became a partner and under both conditions, existing and future.
Okay, great. And then, this is a question, actually back to the council, that I think we heard at least two comments from the WFCAC about reprioritizing the onsite composting goal. So, I don't know if you'd want to discuss that here this evening, but seems to be a good idea. It seems that it could be an appropriate time to discuss that and maybe give some direction to staff and get some more feedback from, from the advisory board on that prioritize, prioritizing that differently perhaps, or we should maybe just discuss it. Okay, thanks.
Great.
Mike, I have a question for you.
One thing I did want to point out in terms of schedule, is we understand that there's another meeting here, I think at six o'clock. I believe we had a planning commission meeting. So, I did want to point that out, just so you all keep that in mind. I had a short presentation I wanted to go through just on an overview of the, of the overall program that probably will take, I can brief through it in five minutes. So, I'm glad to respond to as many questions as I can. I just want to be mindful of that, of that time limit.
So, you know, if we've got a plethora of more questions here, looking at, we've got 15 minutes, you want to just go ahead and get this presentation back and then get through questions? So, I think that might be, that way we can get through the agenda item.
Okay.
We have a, we're okay with that?
Okay, good.
So, if we can get through your presentation, that'd be great, Mike. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll run through this quickly. This is really for folks that have not kind of tracked some of the advisory committee meetings. But first, I just want to remind everybody, I think Black and Beach did a good job of reminding us of the goals. The goals are what we steer the ship toward every day. So, I won't hit those again. But overview of the program schedule, so this is what, what Rob had talked about a few minutes ago. So, you can't quite read this number, but basically, the objective is, we have phase one facility, phase one meaning the water reclamation facility, the treatment plan itself, influent lift station, pipelines going up to that location, et cetera, that we have that functional in that, in that first quarter of 2021. So, that's what we're steering towards. We are, based on where we're at right now, we feel, we feel like we're on track for that.
Mr. Nunley, it's, I think, important to point out, as you have in the past, that some of the work effort, as much as possible, is occurring concurrently to, that's part of our, our ability to try to expedite this as quickly as possible. We've all banged our fist on the table quite a bit leading up to this point, so I think, I feel like we've done everything we can to speed this process up without sacrificing the value and benefits of the project in the long term.
Yep, thank you. So, some accomplishments today. So, facility master plan, we've, we've talked about the different technical memoranda that have been produced by Black and Beach. Some of these have been internal to share information with us and get input. We finished the survey and aerial photography of Highway 41 and the Atascadero Road corridor from the wastewater plant up to the potential sites. We've presented four of those technical memoranda from the master plan to the advisory committee. Under outreach, we've had stakeholder interviews, community workshops on visual preferences, other uses for the potential wharf property, and also the construction approach, design build and that sort of delivery system, and numerous advisory committee meetings and council updates. Under the environmental and permitting, ESA was selected for our SEQA and our NEPA consultation. We've nearly completed most of the fatal flaw analyses for the Morro Valley sites that we're investigating for the, for the project. And we've had some initial consultation with, with Lafco as well, particularly to talk about annexation and how that would work with some of these potential plant sites. So, excuse me, under the water reuse opportunities and water quality, there's a hydrogeology review of over 500 well logs underway in the Morro Valley. And so, it's a pretty extensive data set that the city's consultant, Fugro, is reviewing. We've, there's a salinity sampling study of the wastewater collection system, because we talked about reverse osmosis. Well, one of the ways you get that cost down is to reduce solid input to the collection system. So, we're working with Larry Walker and Associates to quantify that. And so, you'll see some information coming over the next couple of months on how we can do some low-cost saw reduction in the collection system. Water quality and wastewater flow testing are underway at the wastewater plant and also in the collection system. We've already got our first few weeks of data on the, on collection system flows and also have started sampling at the treatment plant under a more extensive sampling program in anticipation of providing design information for the new plant to the designer a year plus down the road. In project funding, we've submitted a planning grant application for recycled water to State Water Resource Control Board, and also we've, we're working on a state revolving fund planning loan application, and you'll, your council will see that on December the 8th. Groundwater studies are, well, so what I wanted to do was hit some frequently asked questions briefly. So, first one is, when will we decide how to reuse the water? Well, the key to this, groundwater studies are ongoing. We're waiting for the grant to come in from the state board to, to begin that master reclamation plan that we've been discussing, where we really determine the reuse alternatives. Black and Beach is evaluating a suite of facility, of treatment alternatives to cover the range of reuses that we anticipate. So, with that, we'll be able to do some, we'll kind of have the menu for the treatment plant perspective for those, those different polishing steps on the backend of the plan. And then, the objective is November 2016, assuming we get awarded the planning grant in January for 50% of that work, November 2016, that we've, we've have a good handle on reuse alternatives. The next one that comes up is, when are we going to know how much is it going to cost? So, critical question. So, draft facility master plan presentations, you'll see some of that information in draft form in March of 2016. The phase two, that's the, what we call the off-site recycled water system. Those are, if there are customers Those are, if they're our customer turnout, so we're delivering water to irrigation users. If there's storage, pumping, pipelines, spreading basins, all that stuff we call the off-site improvements, well, I have a handle on that after the draft master reclamation plan is done in November of next year. Then when will we know how it could look? So the appearance and that sort of thing are really key, and we get that. Property negotiation research is ongoing in Morro Valley, so that's a critical step there. Visual simulations, we're looking at being able to come back to the community and the council and citizens advisory committee with some concepts in the March timeframe. And then the architectural requirements for the construction contract for the actual plant, those don't really have to be hardwired until we hit that December timeframe. So that gives time for back and forth and input in that, in those visual process. And so you're going to be, you're going to be seeing plenty from us starting 2016, particularly in that February, March, April timeframe. A lot of information coming for the community review, council, and citizens advisory committee will be getting kind of advanced pieces of that so they can provide input and direction to, to our team. So at this point, I'll open to any questions you've got on anything in general. That's all I had.
Thanks, Mike. We'll bring it back to council for questions. Any questions? Matt, did you have any follow-up questions? Noah, John?
Go ahead, John.
You very briefly touched on the property negotiation research is ongoing. Can you comment or elaborate a little bit on that and how close you might be? I see some duplicate activity going on, fatal flaws analysis and some costs being occurred on a different site, so I just wondered if you could expand on that.
Yes, sir, yeah. What you'll see there is, is we've had fatal flaws ongoing at the, at the McElvein property, as you know. We also needed to look at a different part of their property based on discussion and negotiation with the property owner. So that's ongoing. And then we're also looking at the Rigetti site, which you'll see mentioned. So those are the two that we're, we're evaluating, and you'll see those referenced in that budget. And so there's, there is discussion ongoing with, with both parties, and you'll be seeing more on that as, as memorandum of understanding and that sort of thing are developed.
Approximate, are we talking six months, three months, a year? I'm just trying to get.
So the objective is, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to commit, but our objective is to be able to come back to you with, with an update and a preference in the next, in the next month or so.
Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I did want to touch base on the composting discussion that was brought up because that one's, I've been uncomfortable with that since we put it up on the board, which came out of the community workshops, mostly because I think every other phase of this project, we've used the numbers and analysis to, without emotion, make the decision. And the onsite composting, to me, felt like a forced fit within a slew of options that we could handle. And I think where that comes from is trying to maximize our self-sufficiency and long-term costs and, and have built-in flexibility so we can make good decisions down the road and not be committed to trucking to Kern County, for example, and then have them either jack their prices up or tell us they no longer want to accept it and not having a good local option. So I think it'd be good to, within the technical memorandum six, look at that a little more. I know you've already completed that, but also maybe expand that to biosolids handling and how can we, what option helps us reduce that? What's most efficient in the short term? And look at trends for, perhaps for the long term on that one. That's my opinion, probably worth taking a stronger look at, so I would agree with that.
John?
I could just quickly add that the Integrated Waste Management Association has identified a new vendor and will be developing a closed system and may well very much be interested in coming and actually picking that up. So that could be something that you might want to look at, that could be added to that. Thanks.
One, one thing I'll note is, we've been in discussions with IWMA, and, and we're including some of that discussion in the organic waste technical memorandum because it's directly related. So there are some regarding composting, is we're evaluating composting as one of the alternatives in the biosolids. It's not driving selection of all the alternatives, if that makes sense. So we are looking at that as, as an opportunity and as an option, but, but again, it's, we recognize it's a goal, not a mandate, if that, if that makes sense.
Great, I like that. And then just briefly, with Cayucus, we've talked about the, the point where Cayucus would need to make a decision whether or not to join us is, towards the end of facilities master planning process, we'll have better information they could look at, and then depending on what they've identified with their own option, compare the two and make a choice. But what would you estimate at this point to be that, approximately that date when Cayucus would be, we'd, we'd all be looking at the facilities master planning, they'd be able to plug those numbers into their rates and decide one way or the other?
Well, that's a good question. You know, the, the SEQA analysis, SEQA evaluation that we'll go through will likely look at with and without Cayucus because that'll be part of, of an alternative study because it's an obvious thing to be required for the analysis. So from the permitting perspective, those, that may already be covered in some of that, in some of that work, meaning that with, with looking at someone as a potential partner, there may not be a true drop-dead point where you couldn't take them on. What might happen is, there may just be more of an investment to include them farther down the road, if that makes sense.
So the sooner we know what sort of flows we're going to be managing, the sooner we can focus the design parameters and reduce costs overall.
That's correct. And I would say, you know, ideally, you would have it before you've issued a, you know, before you've gone into the design of the influent lift station in Fort Main, even though that design can be modified during the design process even, a year down the road. So it just, it costs more if you get farther down the road.
Yeah, and, and I think I like your explanation because we have said, we'd like to keep the door open for Cayucus as long as possible, recognizing that we have to make decisions ultimately and keep moving forward, and it's not possible for us to wait on them in some of these areas. Okay, just briefly, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to call, call that it for me.
Thanks, Noah. And if I look to my left, any further questions from council? Christine?
I think that, I just wanted to make a really fast comment, that I know that there's some, perhaps, you know, maybe it's just angst is maybe that strong of a word, but I just wanted to sort of reassure everyone, I think council could chime in on this too, is that, you know, property negotiations are really a tricky thing for all of us, whether we buy our own property and our own homes, or buying a business, or whatever you're doing. And, you know, those negotiations, when we do them in our personal lives, happen privately between us and the parties. What, what we're doing here with negotiating, purchasing a site, a property for this new infrastructure is, you know, it's, we're doing a public, we're doing a private process for, what we, most of us would do in private is now being carried on, you know, 75% in public, let's just say. So, you know, there's also just that, there's a, a back and forth that all property negotiations entail, and that's sort of, I think, you know, Mr. Heding has a good question to say, "Hey, what's happening with that?" Because we're hearing that in the community and he's reflecting that, and I just wanted to sort of also reflect that. It isn't as if there's nothing happening. I mean, there's, and maybe you could talk to, just about that, you know, how property negotiations happen in a public setting, that, that there's active, you know, activity going on to get us to the point where we have a solid, you know, agreement with an owner.
Yeah, and what I'll say is, part of that negotiation is determining how much of that property is actually usable, what it costs to build on it, how deep you are to rock, what the soil conditions are like. There's a lot of that that has to be investigated. So we're in, into, into, into that phase. Part of what's ongoing with that then is discussion with the property owners too. What are their objectives? What are their limits or constraints? So there's, I think you, you put it very well, there's just a lot of back and forth.
In other words, there's no hard date on this. It's, the negotiations are in play and that's, and we're, we're doing what we can.
Right.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to express, I'm sure, you know, we all know things, and I think she's expressing to the general public that there's absolutely a lot of negotiation going on to secure it. Okay, thank you.
Considering the hour, I hate to cut things short, but in consideration for our planning commission and other applicants that might be waiting, I think it'd be prudent to go ahead and conclude our meeting and short any further comments.
I would like to have a comment here on this.
Just a minute, Richard, pardon me, as we conclude the meeting, I, I respect you came in late to the meeting, but we have a planning commission meeting, so we're going to conclude this meeting and then go into the planning commission meeting. So with that, just meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.